He's on it.
All right, it's five o'clock. This is what called the work. Hi. What do you believe him? Pleasure to be here.
To the body of the United States of America. The Republic of America stands. My name is Shuven. The God in doing this all, the delivery of duty and justice for our.
I'm just going to go call.
Thank you. I'm going to be right, uh, Vice President Everard.
Here.
Treasurer Zimmerman.
President.
Secretary Wazore.
Here.
Trustee Brady, here. Trustee, uh, Lakey, here. And trustees, Eric.
Here.
And trustee Zeller, here.
All right. Um, the chair will entertain a motion, uh, to, for appointment of me as the president of town. Anyone?
Thanks Nora, I got nervous that.
We're editor second.
I know, is there a second, is there a second?
Yeah.
Do I think I got it, Mike?
Thanks Nora.
Hey. Uh, trustee Zeller, yes. Treasurer Zimmerman.
Yes.
Secretary Wazore.
Yes.
Trustee Brady, yes. Trustee Lakey, yes. Trustee Zerri.
Yes.
Uh, Vice, Vice President or President Purten, I'll get it right, there's too many titles. Everard.
Have to say. Who wanted to kind of, do we have to ever that, right?
I think. That one Purten.
All right, so thank you, uh, so conservation ethic, Nora.
Oh, yes, for sure. A conservation ethic goal number six. To foster a conservation ethic among McHenry County citizens, helping all of us regardless of the basis of our interest in nature. To develop a greater awareness of our role in and responsibility for the total community of life. A conservation ethic asks us to assume a moral duty to become educated about conservation issues and then act on that information. Conservation ethic is an attitude that recognizes the importance of preserving the natural heritage of the county's open space.
Heather. Your next one?
Yes, uh, five point O conservation stewardship pledge. We pledge to make a difference by standing up for our water, wildlife, and way of life in McHenry County. Our quality of life in McHenry County depends on healthy and sustainable natural resources. Thoughtfully developed cities and towns, a strong economy. And beautiful outdoor places to explore, discover, and recreate. Number one, to preserve native plants and animals, geological features. And natural ecosystems that are threatened or endangered in McHenry County. And to reclaim such ecosystems that have integrated for the benefit of present and future generations and for their own sake.
Thank you. Sean.
Well. Uh, our land management statement. Many indigenous groups and tribal nations including Hochunk, Iklu, Tipoda, Tipoda. Muskutun, Miami, Teoria, Atawatami, Sauk, and Mississauga. Henry County is part of their traditional homeland. We invite you to join us in offering respect to the indigenous peoples living here today and their ancestors' stewardship of the land. Together, we celebrate these special places, seek to learn and honor the history of those who came before us. Strive to forge meaningful relationships with indigenous communities to deepen our collective connection to the land.
Very big deal. All right, adopt the agenda, read your motion for that. Make a motion. Okay, move second, second of my. In seconded to approve the adopt the agenda.
Secretary Wazore.
Yes.
Trustees Eric.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Zeller.
Yes.
Trustee Lakey.
Yes.
Treasurer Zimmerman.
Yes.
And President Purten Everard.
Yes. All right. On to the election of officers. Is there a nomination for a person, if then officer and ethics officer, it's all the same position?
It is.
Oh, my goodness.
I make a motion to nominate Lloyd Everard. Second.
All right, thank you, we've been seconded.
Hey. Do we need to take other any other nominations?
Are there any, oh yeah, three times, are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any of them?
Motion to close nominations.
The motion to close my nominations, are they? Any?
I move. So move.
Second, second, I'm on it.
All right, you ready? Right, Secretary Wazore.
Yes.
Trustee Zeller.
Yes.
Treasurer Zimmerman.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Zerri.
Yes.
Trustee Lakey.
Yes.
And.
Okay.
Okay, I have to say it.
Yeah, all right.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Let me read that this. Can't keep this on time, Boyd. Yep, Mike.
Oh, yeah.
I would nomination for vice president.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Ron Wazore for vice president.
Second.
We've been seconded. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nom? All right, call the vote.
Motion to close nominations.
Move to close.
So moved.
Second. You're mine.
Hi. Treasurer Zimmerman.
Yes.
Trustee Zeller.
Yes.
Trustee Zerri.
Yes.
Uh, sa- uh, secretary, uh, motion for, uh, Vice President Wazore. Oh, thanks, cheers to Vice. Uh, trustee Lakey.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
And President Everard.
Yes. All right, so is there a nomination for treasurer?
I nominate Johnson. Second.
Works fine. Are there any other nominations? Any other nomination? Are there any other nominations? Is there a motion to close nomination?
So moved.
Thank you, Heather.
Second.
You're Bonnie.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Vice President Wazore.
Yes.
Treasurer Zimmerman.
Same.
Hey, trustee Lakey.
Yes.
Trustee, uh, Zeller.
Yes.
Trustee Zerri.
Yes.
President Everard.
Yes.
Congratulations, Sean.
All right, are there any nominations for secretaries?
I'd like to nominate Nora Zeller for secretary.
Second.
Second.
Second of my. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Is there a motion to close nomination? Make that motion. Okay.
I'll second it.
Second it.
Vice President Wazore.
Yes.
Treasurer Zimmerman.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Zerri.
Yes.
Trustee Zeller.
Upstate.
Trustee Lakey.
Yes.
And President Everard.
Yes. The trustee for outreach. Um, so for the, is for the liaison, liaison to the.
Liaison to the foundation and then if in fact we used to with different active groups like NRP, IABT. Or to, um, going to the cog, uh, so that's really up to what the board decides to do, but the real only official one specifically is the touch.
Okay, now to nominate Bonnie for, uh, liaison to the foundation.
My second.
Nomination? I'm it. Any other nomination? Is there a motion to close nomination? Thank you.
I'll close you.
Or Sean?
Second.
Hey. Vice President Wazore.
Yes.
Secretary Zeller.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Treasurer Zimmerman.
Yes.
Trustee Lakey.
Same.
Trustee Zerri.
Yes.
And President Everard.
Yes. I'm tired for you too, because I did the last. You, you're with you. All right, thank you all. Okay, special recognition and presentations. This is yours.
Well, the first one, uh, just want to again share with the board and congratulations to Director of Information Finance Dialic and I as an accounting team. Uh, as well as the board and then as the staff on receiving the, uh, Government Finance Officers Association's budget award. It takes a lot of work to pull up the document together. It's a great read and then just congratulations to the, our leadership, so. And then we have new team member introductions, so Chief, I want, I'm sorry, Chief Stewart, that was the photo.
Stand up Sam. Just real quick, I want to introduce guys to our new, new news officer, Sam Cora. He's from McHenry. Um, we had ninety-three, I think, applicants come out and Sam really operated himself from the back, so. He had twenty-five years at NLS PD, just a ton of experience, uh, he's been volunteering at the district for the past five or six years. Um, with the site steward out at St. Restoration Affairs and stuff out there, so he's connected with the district. Really loves our mission and what we do, so. He's in his second, uh, phase of four of field training already, uh, bring him up here for, uh, formal swearing in. Closer to finishing with his field training, but I wanted to introduce him to you. He's been a tremendous asset to the team already, he's fitting in really well. So, welcome to board, Sam.
Thanks for the volunteer work, you, buddy. Welcome.
And thank both, uh, Chief Stewart, you led the hype with Mike. This past Saturday.
How was the turnout?
Um, been about five. Yeah, I was, I think mine was, yeah, it was drizzling at first when the ranger picked up the bomb. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah. There it is, there's Sam.
All right. Trustee report. Uh, not too much, like we talked a little bit last, uh, week about the, uh, foundation, uh, holding the August second joint meeting. So hopefully you've all found those you can make in, uh, that event and then after that Nora, you'll be representing, I said.
The, yeah, please just go.
Elizabeth, so wear your armor.
Yes, okay.
Good luck with that, we'll, we'll put you in your background.
Okay. We'll bring cookies.
Well, and I think it is good, we are going to allow to, to go over, walk on the side, not, not enter the buildings, but let's go. I think we deserved the criticism they gave us for not allowing that last time, so we've learned our lesson and. Welcome. Anything else, any other boards? Right, county board.
Um, yeah, so we're, uh, getting started on our budgets for next year and so. This year, I guess, uh, being new to the, to the board this year, um.
We're actually getting in front of it earlier, and we're going to be asking you guys to try and write down your budgets a little bit more so we can understand them. So we're just not making decisions at the very end. And so it's a little bit different process to me, it's my first time, so it's, I'll have nothing to go off of, but, um, we already started the process for the budgets, so. Um, that's about, that's going on now.
Uh, public comments, we have anyone online?
I'm not seeing any raised hands online.
Thanks, Nadia.
President Everard, I did, uh, guess this was.
Oh, yeah, sorry, yeah, there's this people on that, I was that. Yeah, so this is a very important picture of my two grandsons. Uh, the reason I put this on here, this is a photo from today, they're coming home from, uh, conservation summer camp. Uh, they are, they're really grown. They're, they are wiped out and then my granddaughter on the far right, she had a, uh, three hour tumbling camp.
Oh.
So she was wiped out, she was in the car when they picked up the boys, she didn't wake up and that's where he probably. So I, I, the camp is going great and stuff. I guess, uh, Thursday now because of the heat, they're actually going to look at. Or solve this, it, no different than if it was a rainstorm or anything, so they have indoor activities lined up as well, but they did the camp last year. And just loved it, and they're back at it, so for everybody that's involved, education center. Please pass word on that to.
Okay.
It's our joint.
What did they get?
Well, just today it was at the hollows, um, the first day it was at the Prairie, Prairie View. And then, uh, indoors now they're going, I think Thursday it's going to be back indoors at Prairie Valley or Prairie View, kind of inside. But they do canoeing, fishing, they do all, they do all, they can go and hike and name it. Go and catch and all that for the start. Um, all right, well, that's all I have for this time. All right, so the consent agenda. So. End this over to.
Hey. Okay. Number fourteen point one, approval of minutes of previous meetings. Fourteen point one A, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, committee of the whole executive session. Fourteen point one B, June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, committee of the whole. Fourteen point one C, June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting. Fourteen point two treasures report, fourteen point two pay acceptance of treasures report for June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, as presented. Fourteen point three investment report fiscal year twenty twenty-six, quarter one. Fourteen point three A acceptance of investment report for June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, as presented. Fourteen point four, resolution number twenty-five dash fifty-four, authorizing the destruction of listed verbatim recordings. Of executive session meetings prior to January twenty twenty-four in compliance with the Illinois Open Meetings Act. Fourteen point five, resolution number twenty-five dash fifty-five, authorizing the release. Of the listed executive session meeting minutes to the public domain in compliance with the Illinois Open Meetings Act. Fourteen point six, resolution number twenty-five dash fifty-six, designating depository financial institutions. For district funds from August first, twenty twenty-five through July thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Fourteen point seven, resolution number twenty-five fifty-seven, accepting the marketing and educational division annual report. For fiscal year twenty twenty-five and the marketing and educational plan for fiscal years twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven, as presented. Fourteen point eight, resolution number twenty-five dash five eight, amending the funding sources. The approved US FWS agreement and establishing a restoration ecologist position. Fourteen point nine, resolution number twenty-nine dash five, twenty-five dash fifty-nine. Authorizing the executive director to provide a letter of no objection to the US Army Corps of Engineers, Chicago District. On the West Solid Road Bridge Construction Project. Fourteen point ten, resolution number twenty-five dash sixty, authorizing the executive director. To execute the sale of two hundred and twenty-nine linear feet of stream credit at a cost per unit, seven hundred eighty dollars for linear foot. To JVC Development Inc., C dash okay, John Heinze, totaling one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars. Fourteen point eleven, resolution number twenty-nine dash six one, authorizing the executive director to negotiate and execute the necessary contracts for medical insurance. For period of January first, twenty twenty-six through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Through the Intergovernmental Personal Benefit Cooperative, IPBC, as follows. Execute a contract for medical insurance with Cross Blue Shield for a PPO, Blue Choice Actions PPO. HSA, Blue Edge HSA, and HMO, Blue Advantage HMO. Additionally, staff recommend leaving dental vision and life insurance plans unchanged. For the period, January first, twenty twenty-six through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Fourteen point twelve, resolution number twenty-five dash six two. Ratifying the executive director's execution of change order number four in the amount of six thousand, eight hundred forty-five dollars. With Happen Caver Construction Inc. of Gilberts, Illinois, for the Hollow Lake Atwood Improvement Project. To include material strength testing of both the concrete sidewalks and asphalt trail, which is part of the Hollow Lake Atwood excess project. Fourteen point three, reauthorizing the preparation of specifications and letting of the bids. For the Prairie View Educational Center Exterior Stair Improvements, Crystal Lake, Illinois. Bid number oh three two five dash oh nine dash oh one dash RA. Fourteen point four, resolution number twenty-five dash sixty-three, authorizing the sale of five acres of wetland credit. At a cost per unit of a hundred and twenty-four thousand, a hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars per acre. To the Henry County Division of Transportation totaling six hundred twenty-four thousand. Fourteen point fifteen, resolution number twenty-five dash sixty-four, authorizing payment in the amount of six hundred forty-nine thousand, six hundred twenty-five dollars. Due on August first, twenty twenty-five, to the Bank of New York Mellon, Dallas, Texas, for the general obligation refunding bond series twenty fourteen.
Thanks Nora, and as a law that's a, you're moving to approve.
Yes.
Second. On, second by Ron, before we, before we vote, just one question, the, we go back to the thirteen. Fourteen point one, are there subunits there, should those be fourteen point one A, fourteen point? See? Pretty big man.
Move on. Uh. They are on the fourteen point one, the approval of the minutes.
Yeah.
Uh.
But you are correct, on this agenda, there was a typo in the.
In the.
Okay, but it's all right on now.
Uh, yes, it's fourteen, yes, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Appreciate you catching on.
And right on that.
I'm looking. All right, so they moved in seconded. To approve the Ezra.
Okay.
Then the agenda Ezra.
Okay. Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Zerri.
Yes.
Treasurer Zimmerman.
Yes.
Trustee Lakey, yes. Vice President Wazore.
Yes, and a job well done.
Yeah.
He used to have.
He don't have that, Dan, to go. Secretary Zeller. Yes, and President Everard.
Yes. Right. Then the. Okay, bill payable for the month of June.
Uh, fifteen point one A, shows internal audit. Uh, this, this month, well, actually for June is the bills, but, uh, I just selected two items for review. Uh, first one is invoice WA one two seven two five nine two zero. To MIPB, we in hearing LST. Pounds of thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars and cents. To. The other item was invoice five nine four three to weight finding signage and pounds of sixteen thousand, seventy-six dollars. So we will get that back for, uh, by our next meeting. That's in our board, I, for review. Uh, fifteen one B, uh, I make a motion to approve the payment of bills as indicated on the submission of bills pending report. For month ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and give me a second.
Second.
Bonnie?
Trustee, go ahead.
Did I just say I'm staying for this one?
I'm staying for the vote. Um, because of the I W in person.
Trustee Zerri.
I've seen.
Um, Vice President Wazore.
Yes.
Trustee Lakey.
Yes.
Treasurer Zimmerman.
Yes.
Secretary Zeller.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
And President Everard.
Yes. Yeah, good introductory report.
Okay, a couple things for you this evening, um, in your package, you had all the quarterly updates, it's that are strategic science capital projects, we're just getting into the sleep here, so any questions? Contain those, but, um, progress on each of those. I also then wanted to go over, I'm just going to stop my screen. And to the whole. A couple of presentations, uh, to the whole. Second. First one we want to go through is the, um. Inhibited officers. Out of such an interest. See, some on the screen, print up paper one. See, right now. Six. Patients switching. Everybody see that, I did send out an email, uh, to everyone and with our attorney, Andrew Payne. Updated, um, the specific form for all trustees to go ahead and I'll kind of go into the details of why that's important, but in essence. What it's helping us do as a staff and monitoring, uh, just our purchasing and invoices related to. So this falls, there's many acts as we onboard the board members that not only the Conservation District Act. Meetings Act, Freedom of Amendment Act, all the, there's a lot of legislation that the Illinois General Assembly, uh, does pass. And specifically for those that are elected and appointed, um, you must comply with the Illinois, uh, officers. Activities Act, and I kind of want to highlight, um, some of the slides that I'm using was a presentation that our attorneys, Tressler, did at our annual state conference. At the Soaring to New Heights, and again, I'll do a plug, you'll be getting, uh, an opportunity to attend that conference coming up in January. There's a lot of legal sessions, sessions related to development and governance, as well as many other activities and programs that of, of interest to the board and to staff. But this was specifically from a session, uh, looking a gift horse in the mouth, but local government leadership must know about ethics laws and more. Conflicts of interest was one component on it, um, if ban act and ethics ordinances and all those, uh, were included as well as. Tonight, I just wanted to highlight the conflicts of interest. So again, this was on the form that was identified, but appointed trustees to the district are prohibited from providing certain types of services to the district. Or having direct or indirect financial interest in any contract or performance of any work. In the making or letting, which such officers may be called upon to act or vote. So in essence, the summary of this is a trustee should not take part in any debate, that would be a conversation that would be taking place around the table. Or vote on any contract or service in which the trustee has a direct or indirect interest or is employed by the company. And in certain instances, even the district may be prohibited from entering into that contract regardless of whether a trustee abstains from the vote. Or the debate, um, on that particular contract, so that's why it's really important for us to know because not all of our purchases come to the board of trustees. Uh, or approval, many are handled by the staff, uh, directly to the threshold. And the reason why this is so important is because under many acts, uh, whether it's the ethics ordinance or Open Open Meetings Act. Um, there's an opportunity to appear, you know, whether it be public access counselor, um, or through a way to kind of work through and. Process to say, oops, I made a mistake, this one is a felony, it's a class, uh, three felony, and so there is no. So I'm emphasizing, it's really important that we take this to heart with all of the legislation, uh, and every. So, um, and, uh, we have an attorney on board here, so, or if I get anything wrong, you call me and tell me.
Well, the only thing is a class two, a felony would require jail time. A misdemeanor could be like a fine, but a felony could actually.
So two types of conflict interest, statutory and common law, which is really what we're talking about this evening. Statutory or the, the items where the Illinois General Assembly or federal law says, this is what, you know, the law is. And then the other with common law is court, court cases and what's happened and, and how. So, um, when should elected official, appointed official, that's one of the same, be concerned about a potential conflict interest? And you should be concerned if there has some financial interest with a contract in which we're doing business. So if you're employed, um, you have a certain percentage of financial interest or you have a personal interest in some action to which the local government is involved. So we're involved with a lot of different types of activities, um, a lot of contracts come across, uh, do business with, um, procurement, lease arrangements, uh. And purchase arrangements, I mean, it's many different times, yeah, so that's something to. So, um, in this case, it's very clear elector appointed public officials of the governing body are prohibited by state law. Having a direct or indirect financial interest in any contract or the performance of any work and letting such officers may be called upon to act. Summary, indirect meaning that you directly or indirectly could be a member of your household, a family member, um, you know, that would be direct and that still would be. Should, um. And what we said, there is no cure, the violation is a felony, a felony, so just abstaining or not attending the meeting where the vote is coming through is not going to insulate a member. From their action, so it's important for exposure and, uh, and I'll make sure that, uh, that is not bad time. So there are exceptions though, um, to the prohibited interest in contracts and so. Governing body may have a direct or indirect financial interest with the district, but there's very limited circumstances and that will be. Value of the contract is minimal and I'll define what that means. Moment, when the ownership of the company is limited and when the ownership of the company. Moment, when the ownership of the company is limited and when the ownership of the company is minimal. So if there's a less than seven and a half percent ownership interest, the district could still would board and enter that contract with the person or firm. When the governing body of the individual that's on the board has less than a seven and a half percent share in their ownership and, there's an and. That they disclose the nature and extent of the interest prior to the vote, so that, that, you know, obviously, less than seven percent, you just disclose to say, hey. Um, I am one abstaining, and this is the reason why you cited meeting and, um, you're not participating prior to any deliberation or anything that's going on, and that's clear. And, and that's okay, so that's thanks. And, um, the interested member must abstain, um, as long as, again, something to remember is we must have a forum present, so. For a board of seven, that means four of us, um, are around the room and that's the majority. And if there's only four members to hold a meeting and individual abstains, well then we're already see over our seats and, and. Us, that vote can't take place, and so there's a, there's an issue. Um, and then the contract still needs to be approved by the majority of those holding office, who, quote unquote, and then, um. The other piece with that less than seven and a half percent, all contracts valued over fifteen hundred dollars were awarded after a sealed bid. And contracts under fifteen hundred need not be bid, and then the person of the interested member cannot exceed the aggregate amount of twenty-five thousand dollars in that. So again, there's a financial note, it's in that, in that calendar year, it's a fiscal, so, um. You know, I'm going to make sure, so again, um, this is why we need to know and we need to disclose if have that interest because, and, uh, in fact, because we know we're going to be capped off. Should I check? If there's more than seven and a half percent ownership interest and the contract is less than two thousand dollars in value. Then the district, go ahead and enter into the contract and. The individual which has an interest in that, um, the contract cannot exceed two thousand dollars on occurrence or four thousand dollars for the fiscal year. So we're not talking twenty-five thousand, we're talking two thousand, four thousand, and that's it, and it's fiscal year, not calendar year. Um, still the same applies that there needs to be a forum, a majority of those holding office, and they're abstaining, um, and, um. However, and they have to disclose, and they must abstain voting, however, if that contract is greater than that or that four thousand. The district, the district is prohibited from having any relationship with that business, so we can't even. Um, for less than one percent ownership interest in any amount of contract, and many times with shareholders with larger corporations like Ford, Xerox, and, and as examples here, Apple, et cetera. Um, Microsoft, um, again, you're disclosing that this doesn't become a particular issue, it's not. So share, shares is small. So in this case, you still publicly disclose, you must abstain, and then majority. So it's pretty clear, um, you know, as far as an employee of the company, an officer is not interested, party of the officer is just an employee of the company. Um, but applies to local government, so the way, again, just the clarification, the Illinois General Assembly is talking about. This is here, uh, our officials. Um, and then these are found with statutes and the court rulings of common law. And in this case, common law, those others we were talking about were statutory, would mean that just from an ethics perspective, common law that's been shown. Small drifts and therefore, um. There's remedies associated with that, so again, just knowing and sharing and open, um, is really, so. Um, a lot of times you'll see this, if you're a contract and you're appointing yourself to advisory, a zoning appeal is a different interest to which there's. Uh, uh, very much direct interest, um, that, just an example, so. Uh, and, um, some examples. Your own property for special use, appointment to a petition, uh, participates in a process that awards insurance. Uh, to, uh, space for lease of office is an example, um, but all, there's not necessarily, not all relationships rise to level of conflict of interest, so. Obviously, as a board, you levy tax every year, each board member is a resident, right, that's required by statute to be on the board. So just because you're voting on a taxation and there's an interest, that's a. So, that's all I have, any questions? Not just stocks, I think were ruled out on, because that falls into your share, right, it's got a majority that's greater.
Question, um, how far out does the indirect connection go, like, with a family member? For example, my sister-in-law's father. Is that in the web of consideration here, is there a certain level at which someone's not really a relation?
So Andrew, it'd be great to answer that, but to my knowledge of what I've been trained, obviously, in your immediate household or siblings, your parents, you know, um. Your children, right, and, right, and that type of network, I think there could be a situation that may be unique to.
Would need to look there. Or even like, um, if you've got like a future interest coming, so like indirectly would be like. You know, if you voted on this contract and it got awarded, there'd be some sort of kickback even though you're for, for, you know, so. There's those kinds of assets where there'd be like a future monetization that you would profit from in some way, and you, you have the knowledge of that too. So that's another asset.
So knowledge is part of. Because you could have somebody who's an attorney, who's related to somebody on the board, doing business with a company. But the lawyer's not. By, you know.
Yeah, you would have to have.
Uh, going to talk to anybody else about who he's doing business to, that's part of.
Yeah, it would be something like you would, like you would have some sort of ownership interest or you have a future ownership interest and you had knowledge of it, I mean, you would have to. Um, you would really have to know that, hey, there's, this is going to be a violation, you would need to, or there's going to be a covenant for you, so knowledge is a. Yeah, it's knowledge, it's knowledge and consent, but, you know, the indirect too would be like. No, to, um, it would be whether or not you know that there would be some sort of future right that you vested in, you know, that contract went forward and. Some sort of vested interest. You know.
These, these apply to, right, we're your elected appointed, uh, officials, staff, uh, there are different ethics guidelines, et cetera, but not in this specifically because you are. You're fiduciary, you're all, the district have a responsibility to use the public. That's my, yeah, my general, I'm already has, like, sound, you're clear.
So you listed with the forms that we signed off on today and handed in, are they good for one year?
Right, we will do this annually, and it's something to change throughout the year that we need to be aware of and let us know. Again, it helps when we do the vouchers, you'll see when we go through if there's something, our best to flag it. Responsibility doesn't fall on staff, we're here to help, but ultimately, it's the individual board members' responsibility to disclose the. Just trying to flag it, our goal is to guide and, and generally, it's not a particular issue, so, just, but there will be. Different types of things and we don't know. Relationships and. Any more questions, thank you, I just wanted to fix your.
Thank you, excellent.
Right?
All right, I've got a short presentation for you, just kind of the update on state of things with. E-bikes, e-devices, it's kind of a hot topic in all of our communities right now, um, and definitely, you know, is there. Any popularity, they're coming down in price, and say it's summertime, school's out, it's around, so I just kind of wanted to show you. What we're doing, um, what we're seeing, and, and what we're coming from on it. Um, I broke a hurdle rule here, a lot of words on the. I did want to show the Illinois vehicle code, this is our governing body, right, when it comes to rules and the laws. Regulatory on, on bicycles, low speed electric bicycle. Fully operable pedals and electric motor less than seven hundred and fifty watts, and they've got three classes, one, two, and three. These are not mopeds and not motor driven site, uh, cycles, which is a, so, so. Classes, next, next screen, please. I know it's in the background there, but the three classes are one, two, and three pedal, all have pedals. Class two. Is a throttle, uh. One and two are twenty mile, hour, max, and class three is twenty eight max. So it's got to, got to have pedals, got to be less than seven hundred and fifty watts and fall into those classes to be considered like. The definitions in our ordinance, so we sat down two years ago with the group and we kind of looked at this. More from a safety perspective, we've got the state law, we've got our ordinance, what can we do as a district to make sure our users are safe on the trails? Um, we defined these as micro mobility devices, which is bicycles, e-bikes, electric scooters, shared bicycle and scooter fleets. Electric assisted pedelec bicycles and specialty micro mobility, so these are our unicycles. Electric unicycle, skateboards, electric skateboards, one wheels, segways, hoverboards, or any similar device, so we are seeing all that out there and more. Uh, these manufacturers are coming, it seems like every week they come out with something. Just the other day, somebody forwarded me one, it was a. Scooter that had a body of a horse, it was a horse. So, I don't know where that one would fall, probably this one, yeah, there's a lot, right. On the horse springs, sure, so. Uh, but I did want to point out, we were kind of ahead of this, a couple years ago, we saw it coming. Um, again, we're looking at it from the safety side, and here's our ordinance, I just highlighted a couple things here. Um, the speed on our trails is fifteen miles an hour for e-bikes. Um, some of these things can go much faster, you know, that class three was twenty-eight, the unclassified ones can go four, five, fifty miles an hour. Obviously unsafe out anywhere. Um, you know, it went to. Uh, exercise reasonable care, um. No, uh, fossil fuel engines may or allow, that's, that hasn't changed, that was, that was before e-bikes came, so no dirt bikes, gas dirt bikes, gas bicycles, so. All right, next one, this is what we're seeing a lot of, this is part of these electric dirt bikes, these are your Surans and your Tellarias. Um, those that are pictured there in the middle, um, those are Tellaria, I believe. That company specifically markets those as e-bikes, on their website, it's a drop down box for e-bikes, there's a bunch of e-bikes there, but towards bottom are these. Electric dirt bikes, this is a motor vehicle as far as state of Illinois is concerned. These things are twenty-five hundred to twenty-two thousand five hundred watts, serve fifty-five, seventy miles an hour if you're out of a. Uh. Definitely unsafe and illegal on our trails, this is a trail cam. Heck here, this is Sergeant Xavier out with a gentleman on a Suron, I believe, which was an electric motorcycle. So that's, that's what we're seeing showing up, um, and we're just getting the word out there that these are, these are not allowed, these are in our ordinance, that they're not allowed.
Do those dirt bikes should, should require a license?
Um, if you're going to operate them on the road, they would need a license and headlight, turn signals, insurance, registration. Next slide, so again, just over seven hundred and fifty watts not allowed, so I went on a few different websites. Um, some of these don't look like dirt bikes, right, these look like bicycles, but if we look at the wattage. There's one that's thirteen fifty, uh, sixteen hundred. Nine twenty, or one on the far right is six hundred, so the only one that would be legal there is the one on the far right, so it was a class one, two, or three. So, it's, it's kind of an uphill battle, we're seeing. A lot of different manufacturers, you can go on Amazon and buy these things, you know, you can go to local stores and buy them, and all of them are unclassified. The wattage is really old.
And they're silent, silent, too, right, they don't get annoying.
Yeah, they're quiet. Uh, next slide, believe it or not, we're seeing fake stickers out there, just the other day, we stopped a. Um, electric dirt bike that had a, had a class three, seven hundred and fifty watt sticker on it. When it was in fact a twenty-five hundred watt dirt bike. So these kids know what these ones are, they know what they are.
What's that?
This is, uh, this is Amazon.
You can say, let's make it buy it on.
You can buy it on, on Amazon, twelve bucks for a six pack there, so. So, again, this is what we're up against, um, you know, we have the internet, obviously, so we jump on and we'll look at the, look at the make and model and. Help ourselves and see what that achievement is, but. Uh. Next slide, some of these other devices we're seeing, uh, again, another trail camp deck, this is down by Lincoln Hills Airport. Uh, with a ninety degree turn there, you see this gentleman on a one wheel. Um, these devices in our ordinance, they, they have to be going ten miles an hour, I can guarantee you with that leaning angle he's got there, he's going much faster than that time. Uh, so segways, hoverboard is that middle thing, and then electric skateboard on the right. Um, again, ten miles an hour, so, and we, we are seeing. A lot of folks hiding that, but this gentleman obviously is, is not. So in summary, an e-bike, electric bicycle must have fully operational pedals and electric motor less than seven hundred and fifty watts and fall into one of those three categories. State law. Off-road trail bike is prohibited, um, on, on the trail and on any of our property that's in our ordinance. And then the rest of our, my bullet points are, you know, for motorized vehicles, which are dirt bikes. Insurance, registration, and a license.
Good question.
Yeah.
Um, sometimes out on the Hebron Trail, uh. The bikes with no motors, they're just fly.
Just regular bicycles?
Yes, I mean, they're sure.
Fifteen, fifteen is the speed limit.
Okay.
Yep, so, let us know, we can come out there and have conversations, and that's what this slide is about, is what we're doing about it. Our directed patrols, really, we're sending officers out on the trails either on foot, or I'll. Bring their squad out and park it off to the side, and, uh, get the handheld radar out. Got obviously bicycles, and we're really just trying to get the message out there, um, that these things are illegal, a lot of, a lot of the kids know. But, uh, there are some that definitely think that they have an e-bike and it's, it's not, so we're trying to get that, that, uh, message out there and coming out from that safety perspective. Um, so again, we're using technology and people, we're, uh, continuing to work with our marketing department on our information campaign. Done quite a bit of education, handouts, signage, uh, we have a QR code that links to our website where we have an e-bike page. And we have some FAQs on there, we're going to update that with some of these pictures of dirt bikes with like the line through it, right, these are not allowed. Want to put some of the state laws on there, just to kind of links to the state law where people can get that information, because there's just a lot of confusion out there, it's, like I said, it's a moving target. Trying to stay ahead of it, I think we're in a good place, our ordinance and kind of our approach, uh, from the P D side, I don't feel like it's out of hand, um, I think we're on top of it. John, I know you had asked about a group of, uh, e-bikers down in the Ogunquin area, Crystal Lake. Still haven't come across those, talking to everyone on the trail, but I haven't seen them, it was a critical reach from Ogunquin, I know that some neighborhoods were getting, uh, large groups of bikers on the dirt bikes. I'm just kind of heading throughout the roads, so there, where it was that they were using the trail, but we haven't seen that, our cameras are in our patrol.
I was there, two days ago, I was at a block up in, on seventy-six, three kids on the, uh, electric dirt bikes. In the middle of traffic, did wheelies right through the intersection, everyone had to stop and then they just.
Yeah, a lot of these communities, I'm talking to them, that they don't know what to do, they're kind of hands in the air, like, why are these, are these e-bikes or they're not, so we're, we're helping out our neighbors too. That message out there, I'm sharing our ordinance with them, sharing the state law with them, just kind of educating them as well, so, trying to get everybody on the same page with it.
And as a penalty, so.
Yeah.
If you have any darkness.
Absolutely, yeah, we can write tickets right now, again, it's more of an educational, we're trying to just have the conversations, hit folks on what laws are, what our rules are. We can absolutely start writing tickets on, we will, especially for, uh. People start reoffending. Second, second.
Has anyone been hurt, like, did they, like, hit a person running or walking, and then?
Oh, we haven't had that yet, I think in the past three years, certainly if a wrong job, you might remember, I think we've had two accidents involving e-bikes that I can remember. I think just the operator was injured, well, that's part of it was.
I did some research on it a couple of years ago for presentation, there really is not a lot of data out there for, uh, because I believe. Most accidents are, they're, they were not distinguishing whether it was an e-bike or a conventional pedal bike. I think that's changing because I believe they're seeing the need to have that information out there, isn't a problem. But the studies, the early studies did not show a difference, uh, in, in the accident, right? E-bike versus conventional bike, simply because I don't think anybody was looking for it.
So that's what I have. Any more questions?
Any chance they're taking these bikes off trail?
We haven't seen that. You know, I'm sure it does happen. You know, every once in a while we'll see some, some bicycle tracks on the trails out of facial park or some of the other parks, but haven't, I don't really seen too many.
Totally, like your Soulville program. How to buy sticker for Soulville? I mean, would that serve some headlines?
That's the state, state of Illinois requires registration.
Okay, even on your trails?
Yeah, we don't have district stickers of this stuff. Once it's on.
Educate them.
Right.
I mean, get a sticker for five dollars and get an education.
Thank you. Good job. We're pulling that together based on last week's request and this has been very proactive. So that's great. The only other two things I will leave you with is if you're curious, the Illinois General Assembly, they now have a new website. Everything has been moved, but it's cleaned up. So if you're looking on aisle statutes or obviously what's going on in the House and the Senate and Governor's Office, check it out. But a lot of information's out there, but it's easy to navigate and that just went live. And then lastly, we have a response to public notices. We get many a time activities are coming either the county or through the different villages. And we take it through our process and determine whether it fires us to fight comment or not. In your package seeking, there is one of you also. We did get a request from the city of Marango, a politician are looking for rezonies. And their meeting was tonight. There's D B A. I mean, speaking, village administrator, city manager is out of town, but they are going to the home to meet. They are going to table this item till next month. But we see our response to this. One, there is a concern environmental impact consideration and property on sides and obviously it's a recreational path and now. Which is key. And then obviously there's a. The district is not regulatory. So again, we just offered this as a action to them in advance. So they're aware to, we have the ability to make a decision. We've offered to me, should they have an interest in sitting in this or. And, you know, again, we don't respond to the district. There's many kinds when we go through our process, there'll be, you know, letters that we need to give you. Everybody get any questions?
If this gets approved, regular planning, does it go to the county board?
No, they would have been this city of Marango, so they would have restriction slapped to pile stone water. It's a certified city draft of more requirements there. That's in there.
All right. Any other public comments? Anybody online?
I'm not seeing any raised hands online.
Thank you. So is there a motion to go into executive session?
Secretary Keller. Yes. Trustee lady.
Yes.
Trustee sir.
Yes.
Vice President Wazore.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
And Treasurer Zimmerman.
Yes.
And President Everard.
Yes.
Jurn and going to executive session and if it won't.
Okay, President Everard.
Yes, here.
Vice President Wazore.
Here.
Treasurer Zimmerman.
Present.
Secretary Keller. Yes, I'm here. Trustee Brady. Here. Trustee lady. Here. Trustee sir.
Here.
All right, before we entertain a motion to adjourn, just want to thank you to everyone who reached a serving capacity. So thank you so much for that. And just want to say, I think we got a really strong board. You know, I've been on other boards and I'll tell you what, there's a really talented group here and engaged and we're going to have fun and get things done. So. Is there more storage?
I move to adjourn.
All right, move. Second, second. Sean's.
Trustee lady. Secretary Keller. Yes, Vice President Wazore.
Yes.
Trustee Zari.
Yes.
Treasurer Zimmerman.
Yes.
Trustee Brady. Yes, President Everard.
Yes.
Now Elizabeth.